All right, we will call to order this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee at 6:03 PM. Do notice having been posted, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do a roll call of members present, Ms. Ferrera.
Present.
Ms. Ashley.
Present.
Mr. Fenstermaker.
Present.
Ms. O'Brien.
Present.
Ms. Solomon.
Present.
Mr. Viera.
Present.
Ms. Kettle.
Present.
And also with us this evening, our Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Jeffrey Schoonover, our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Raquel Pellerin, our Director of Curriculum, Ms. Elizabeth Haspel, and our Principal, Dr. Susan Brossford. At this time, I would ask you to rise for the pledge. Very good. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Please note that the next regularly scheduled meeting of this committee will be held on Tuesday, October 8th, here in the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Library. The first item on the agenda for this evening under Student Teaching and Learning is our Student Representative Report, Ryan and Alice.
Hello, everybody. I hope you all had a enjoy your whole summer. So, school being already in full swing, sports teams and performing arts groups are already preparing for competitions, and regarding sports, they already have had many different competitions for each sport, and this Wednesday, auditions for the drama club have, will be, will begin, and they have announced their play to be "Radium Girls."
Regarding the senior class, in the past week, a few of us have been meeting with our guidance counselors during the Blue Raider block to discuss the college application process, so navigating the platforms of the Common App and Naviance, and other students will be meeting with them within the next few weeks, and in upcoming weeks, guidance counselors will be meeting with the senior English classes to further discuss the college application process, along with other future plans, and guidance counselors will be scheduling individual senior interviews to further discuss the process.
And how that's been working during the Blue Raider blocks is each guidance counselor has their set group of students, and during each, each Wednesday, it's a small group of six, six or seven students. So it's, it's, you get a step by step of how to work the Common App, Naviance, and then once you get to your one-on-one in those English class discussions, they'll go further in depth. In regarding some topics we've discussed at our last Student Advisory Committee meeting, we, so each month, we discuss comments, concerns, whatever about the school that we like to bring up to Dr. Brossford and Mr. Schoonover. We mentioned sharing on the school website, a Google form that students can fill out, ranging, any student at the high school can fill out, so we can get a wider range of input, and that's something that I plan to bring any of the comments to the next school committee meeting.
As you may know, we sadly lost a member of our senior class, Zachary Dean, last month. A candlelight ceremony was held on campus to remember Zachary with all proceeds. We're planning on going to a bench and scholarship in honor of him and his family.
And that is all we have for this meeting.
Thank you both very much. Does anyone have any questions? Great, so you're off to a good start for you both.
I think so.
Definitely, definitely.
Great, great to have you back, Chris.
Good to be here.
If I may add one thing, I think we decided to meet on the first Wednesday of the month, is that?
Correct.
That's what it is. Mrs. Gagliardi used to be the school committee representative to that, which she would come from time to time to participate in those discussions. I don't know if the school committee wants to assign someone else. We do meet after school, usually from about 2:15 to 3:00, 3:15, so if that is something that the school committee wants to reassign, reappoint someone to participate, we'd be happy to have someone.
Did you say those on Wednesdays?
First Wednesday of the month.
First Wednesday of the month. Is there anyone who would like to, and is able to do that?
It is a weekly.
Month, first, once a month on a Wednesday.
You don't, you don't decide now, I know it's not on the agenda, I just wanted to raise that while.
All right, we'll, we'll think about it, and then maybe we'll have an appointment for the next meeting. Great, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda under new business is the approval of the memorandum of agreement with the Somerset Teachers Association. This would be for the entirety of the agreement. We did receive today a side letter of agreement on a separate issue, but the members of the committee have not had an opportunity to review that, so I think we can hold off on that and approve that piece at the next meeting. But at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Somerset Teachers Association Units A and B for the period of September 1st, 2024 through August 31st, 2027.
Second.
Motion by Ms. O'Brien and seconded by Mr. Fenstermaker, is there anything on discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Thank you, everyone. We're happy to say that we were able to come to a contact with our Unit A and Unit B members that we think serves our students and our staff well, and we appreciate the hard work that they do for our students. The next item on the agenda, sort of a formality, but it's the approval of the Chief Financial Officer contract. You recall, at our last meeting, we introduced Ms. Pellerin, who we're so happy to have on board, and we had authorized Mr. Schoonover to enter into a contract with her for her role as Chief Financial Officer, but we thought it was wise to make a public vote on that. So if anyone has a copy of the contract in the folder. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the contract with Chief Financial Officer Raquel Pellerin for the period of August 13th, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ashley and seconded by Mr. Fenstermaker, anything on discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Thank you, and if we didn't make it clear enough at our last meeting, we'll say it again, we're very happy to have you on board. Thank you.
She came back, so.
It's a good sign. The next item on the agenda is the update on the annual building inspection. Which week?
Twenty-seven?
Was it the twenty-seventh?
It was all a blur.
It was a blur.
Twenty-seven?
The twenty-seventh.
It was the day before students came back to school.
The twenty-seventh.
That's really good. So the committee was able to walk the building, and I thought we had a very positive inspection that, to me, the building still looks new. I think the custodial staff does a tremendous job in, and getting things ready for the beginning of the year is always a monumental task, even more so this year with the, a lot more use of the building over the summer than is customary, so I don't know if anyone has anything they want to add?
I'm just going to mention that I, I was a little bit late, so I missed some of the things. What I saw looked great, and the thing that's especially good is how proud they are of the work that they're doing here, to get the school ready for the students, you know, tell them it wasn't just a chore, it was like they were really into doing it and showing us the area and the track above, and all the work done there, so great job by all the folks involved in that.
I think one of the items that was pointed out in the track was the trophy case that was built, was that by Diamond?
By Diamond.
Diamond students, which looks like it was meant to be there, so it's really cool when we see students from, you know, another school, but obviously Somerset students attend Diamond, so to see that work was really cool and a great way to showcase some of the awards that our student athletes kept, so. So just, I think on behalf of the committee, we'll just extend, extend our thanks and appreciation to all members of the custodial staff who did a fabulous job, and continue to always do a fabulous job keeping this building looking great for our students and our staff. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Mr. Schoonover?
I was just thinking, I, I don't know, I can't recall exactly when that trophy case was installed, sometime in the spring, but to acknowledge Diamond, I, I know on our agendas, we, we often will accept monetary donations, I'm just wondering if there should be a formal vote of the school committee to accept that, and then also a letter either by the school committee or me to Diamond thanking them for building it and everything that they've done, and this really started probably about five or six years ago, when, if not longer, when this was initiated.
I'm wondering if it makes sense, since it's not on the agenda, a specific vote on that, can we put that on the agenda for October? We send them our thanks and appreciation now, but maybe we can officially accept the donation and acknowledge it on the October agenda? Is everyone okay with that? Okay, the next item on the agenda is school opening update and enrollment update. You have some documents in your folder.
Right, so I'll start by sharing the enrollment update, and as I've done for the past few years, just giving really a three-year look at changes in the enrollment. It's not specifically the same date in September each year, I think it happened whenever the school committee occurred, the first meeting of that month occurred. But you can see, just generally speaking, that two years ago, we did have on November, I'm sorry, September 28th, 1,009 students. You can see the breakdown by grade levels, our, the 14 students in our transition program, which is the 12-plus, homeschool and out of district students. And then, just moving from right to left, you can see how that's changed since then, and as of the other day, as of Friday, and I checked it in yesterday, it's 908 students total for Somerset Berkeley. That includes 15 students in our transition program, so if you look at just nine through 12, we're just under 900 students now. And just following sort of diagonally from the middle column over, from 91923 to 9724, you can see how the enrollments have changed. Two hundred twenty freshmen last year, 221 sophomores this year, 260 sophomores, 258 last year, 258 juniors. But I, I think when we were, when I was presenting the school choice numbers back to you in the spring, I, I think based on the enrollments on Berkeley Middle and Somerset Middle, I think I was projecting around 900 students in the school. So here we are, just, just over that, including the other total enrollment, and as you can see, we have additionally 16 students who are homeschooled, four actually in each of the four grades, as well as 16 students who are in out of district placements. As for, just generally the school opening, I will ask Dr. Brossford to really comment more on that, since she is the best person to, to really relay that information, but generally speaking, it seemed to be a very smooth opening to the school year from regular transportation. I know Dr. Brossford sent Fisher Bus an email just acknowledging how smooth everything went, and if you recall, we did start that process earlier. Fisher Bus was able to, we were able to get them information much sooner, and they in return was, was able to get us root information, so that we could communicate with families and really start that, but we could do earlier than what we typically do, which certainly paid off once schools opened. But Dr. Brossford, if there's anything specifically you wouldn't want to address?
No, I just reiterate what you said about transportation, Fisher Bus, it, I've been, this is my 14th year here, and we have never had a smoother transportation opening. Working with Fisher, just back and forth the first week of school, everybody found their buses, everybody got home, it was just, it was leaps and bounds above what, what had happened in the past. We call the first day of school of running of the buses with, with the freshmen, because we're always trying to find where everybody belongs, but the way that they structured the buses this year, it was very, very smooth, and by day two, everybody pretty much knew where they were going, so that was great. I mean, from a student perspective, from a teacher perspective, I think it went fantastic. Our professional development started right away with our groups, and we have already started looking at our data teams. We received some really nice data from Highlander, who's now Throughline, who we partnered with last year, they gave us some really concrete data on the freshman class last year, current sophomores. We presented that not only to the professional development groups that were working with those students, and will be working with them this year, but we presented it to the entire school on our second day of PD with the staff, and we started some really, really positive discussions on data and planning some goals for, for what the data said and then what we're going to do. We also looked at some preliminary MCAS data and started that conversation about reading and particularly writing across the curriculum, and that's a focus area of our professional development this year. So, a lot of great discussion. I've had the opportunity to walk through just about everybody's classroom at least once, if not twice, and there's a lot of amazing things that are going on that I can see were direct consequence of professional development from last year. So some of the building thinking classroom ideas that we were talking about, reaching and teaching the freshman learners, those things are really happening in the classrooms right off the bat, and it's becoming ritual routine, so that was really, really nice to see, and I think we're, we're grooving and grooving, or we're backing up.
If I can add to, Dr. Brossford, I think at, at our Student Advisory Committee meeting last week, did ask the students right away, you know, how did, how was opening, and it was from the students who were there, it was also very positive, as Dr. Brossford just
I'm disappointed they didn't mention the charge that I gave of the most important thing in school right now, which is selecting the bell for the school. We lost power over the summer, and we lost the bell that we had, and we've got about a hun, I don't know, 150 options for bells.
There's a lot, there's a lot.
No matter which one I picked, someone has been unhappy, so I have given it to the Student Advisory Council, and they are in the process of narrowing it down, and it's going to go to a student vote, so as long as I get to keep my jingle bells in December, because that's, that was our.
We'll keep that, yes.
So, so I'm excited to see what, what's going to be written here.
And just one other thing, or maybe two other things I want to mention. So as smooth as things were with regular transportation, specialized transportation has, it's probably been more impacting Somerset than Somerset Berkeley, but it, it's been a little bit more challenging this year, and it's mostly due to the lack of drivers, and not just for us, just the lack of drivers in general. Every transportation company is struggling to maintain an adequate fleet of drivers. So that, that has been one challenge, but again, more so for Somerset than Somerset Berkeley. One of the things that I think either we or I need to address going forward is, what do we do for this school when we have an election day, the day after Labor Day? And I think even one year is before Labor Day, I forget when, it's not necessarily the second Tuesday of March, but anyway, when, when you have that so early on, we don't already, we don't want to start school, and then all of a sudden, oh, you have a day off. But it results in us not being able to access, our students not being able to access the student lot, so that we can have voters, even on the primary election day, when, you know, there are, there isn't a lot of foot traffic coming anyway, by, from what I was told from the town. But it's, it's, it's an inconvenience, I think, for the people running the elections here, it's an inconvenience for our students, for our teachers, but I, I would say that one of the reasons why we, it, it's difficult to have the, a no-school day for Somerset Berkeley, and, and maybe it seems like it's not that important at the end of the day, we, we try to end, we still have one teachers' union, pre-K to 12, and we try to have them all end on the same day, and then as soon as, if we have the day off of the high school, we automatically now, our high school teachers, and some people are, are split, some people work between both Somerset and Somerset Berkeley, so then we have one district ending on one day, another district ending on the next day, and then there's some inequities maybe that get introduced with that. But it is something that we need to consider, or I need to consider, and present a calendar to you that just maybe does not have school for this building, or, or, I don't know, for the district, the districts on that particular day. Sorry, I know it, there were some student tickets, parking tickets that were handed out, which I think were, were all retrieved, but still, it's, it's a challenge each year.
I'm glad you mentioned it, I think too, it, I was going to raise that for a future discussion, for an agenda item, and I think also, concerns not only about scheduling, but also about security, it's half-day, and people in buildings, and just the world we live in. I know we're all very cognizant of that, but I think you're right, I think it's maybe time to revisit that entire conversation about where we have voting, how we have voting, when we have voting, and how that coincides with the student's schedule, or the, you know, the district's schedule, and so I'm thinking, if folks are inclined, maybe we can have that discussion for a future date.
I think that makes sense to us. It's better to get ahead of it now, too, so we're going to have the conversation in advance of next year's calendar being released.
So appreciate you bringing that up. Can I, can I just circle back to the enrollment? I just have one, one thing I noticed, and I'm not sure that anybody can answer this at this level, and that's fine, but in looking at enrollment, I think, you know, we're always, we're concerned about sort of the general decline, which is partly demography and partly students have other options. One of the things I noticed is that for our current grade 12 students, that currently at 217, it looks like that class has seen the biggest drop from grade nine, right? I think we've lost about 20 students between grade, or maybe it was their grade 10, 10, 11, 12, sorry, from 237 to 217, and I guess my question would be, is that just a normal artifact of some of the attrition that might happen as students become seniors, or is there something specific about that class, or does, do we typically see that between, say, grade 10 and, and grade 12? And I don't mean to put focus on this bottom, just that's something I noticed, it looks a little bit of an outlier.
So just, I'll give some, some numbers, I have the grade nine numbers from last year's presentation. When that group entered as freshmen, there were 245, so went from 245 to 237, 230 to 217, or 213?
22.
217. The, let's see, the, the class before them, you know, the class that graduated last year, when they were sophomores, they had 262, juniors, they were at 258, and last year, they started their senior with 249. So we did see a, a decrease of 13 students over those, the sophomore-senior span, which is a little bit more pronounced than the current senior class, but the trend is still there. If I may, Dr. Brossford, how, I know we do have some of, some of these students, they're, we see the, the loss in the day school enrollment, but we do know that a handful of these students are enrolled in our evening program. I don't know how, it's probably maybe four or five per, per graduating class on average? Is that about right?
It's less than 10 each year.
Yeah. So we, some of those students aren't captured there, but the trend is definitely there, and we do, I, I should know, I, I think our graduation rate is around 94, 95%. So we are losing, our dropout rate is, is not necessarily the difference between that and 100, but let's, let's just call it about 5%. So that does mean that over the course of their four-year enrollment, we are losing 10-plus students as drop-ups, so I think maybe combining that with students who are transferring to other schools, and students who are entering our evening school program, we probably have maybe about 15 to 20 students per grade that will over that span of time.
The reason I ask personally is because we have an MASC resolution on the table that we're going to talk about, right, suggesting that, recommending that the compulsory age of attendance move from 16 to 18, which we can talk about that, but I have mixed feelings about it, so having that information is, is helpful. Does anyone else have any questions?
Well, I think just something we, we might have talked about before is how we might attract people from other schools for something we offer them, they may not, and how we can advertise that. I saw, there's, I think it was last week's Globe, there was a story about the programs.
So chapter 74, vocational?
No, no, it was on using the, the football, all the, the games as a way to draw students in, and they specifically mentioned our school.
I think we know we're going to be chasing, facing further enrollment challenges with the construction of the two vocational technical. Okay, nothing else? Next item on the agenda is staffing updates, Mr. Schoonover.
All right, so you have on your agenda, just a list of a few resignations that we've received, a lunchroom monitor, and two paraprofessionals, as well as several appointments, including a paraprofessional, an admin assistant hallway monitor, and a long-term sub. So I think, and I spoke with Dr. Brossford yesterday, and I think.
We're down to a lunchroom supervisor, I believe. We're, we're in talks with the final paraprofessionals, so I hate to say it out loud throughout the universe, but as of right now, I believe we will only need a lunchroom monitor, and we're managing that fine with the staff we have, so I'm not concerned about that at all, but.
But in terms of teachers and paraprofessionals, this appears to be the, the first time in a long time where we will be fully staffed, and, yeah, as you said, knock on wood.
That's great news. Does anyone have any questions? Fabulous, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of the MASC voting delegate for the resolutions at the MASC, MAS's joint conference in November. Is there anyone who'd like to volunteer?
I won't be attending this year.
Do we have confirmation on what date the voting will take place?
I think it's Friday, if memory serves.
Pretty sure it's Friday.
It's Friday, I think. I think it's Friday late in the day.
I thought that last year it was, it was part Wednesday?
I was going to say they did it earlier. I think it's.
I think they did it earlier last year, which is why I don't want to assume.
I, I think it used to be on Wednesdays, because it was a lot easier for me, but Fri is just difficult.
I'm checking the agenda right now. Please.
We can circle back to it, it's okay.
It's November 15th, please.
Thanks, see, I'm like, I'm looking at November, I don't see it anywhere. So that's the Friday.
Yes.
Friday at 3:50. You know, I'll, if, does anyone want to do it? If not, I'm going to be there Friday, I'll do it. I'll save Mr. Fenstermaker.
Well, if you are the one, the delegate for the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee, then that would leave me the opportunity to perhaps put my name in the hat for the Somerset School Committee, so I, I think that if you'd like to offer to do it for the regional committee, I think, I feel good about that.
I'm glad someone does. Somebody want to make a motion? I don't want to take it from you, Ms. Fenstermaker, if you want to. I don't wanna take it from you, Ms. Defense Demager, if you wanna-
No, no, I'm fine, thank you.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to have Ms. Andrews serve as the delegate for the resolutions at the MASC MAS joint conference.
We have a motion by Ms. Ashland, I don't know about Ms. Ferrer, anything on discussion? Does anybody wanna save me?
No, we all fully support this, I think.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. See you there. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider the MASC resolutions for support, amendment, or opposition. I think that, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look them up, but they've been in the folder for a bit. Ms. Ferrer, you mentioned-
I can't find it anywhere, but I did see an email that they are having a meeting, I believe the 24th, which is next week, week after? That's in person in Quincy or via Zoom, that they're gonna discuss all the resolutions and like give more information as to what they are, 'cause there's a bunch this year compared to usual.
Yeah, and some of them, I feel like it's way reaching to something that, it's a shame that I can't be there, because I would love to give them a piece of my mind, but things like to recommend to override the 2.5 percent or have the superintendent and the administration to educate people on gun safety, you know, these are things that I don't believe should be even considered. There's, you know, cameras on the buses, like they're making it a mandate, who's gonna pay for this? You know, there are a lot of, many of these are extremely concerning to me.
I share, I share those concerns as well, and I think some of these are very much an overreach of the scope of what I think a school committee is supposed to do.
Not to mention under-resourced. Not resourced, yeah. Would the committee like to hold off on this item for now, move it to the October agenda, and if folks have the opportunity to participate in that, to get further information, and then that would give us time to vote prior to the-
Can you forward that email?
Yes, as soon as I find it.
All right, 'cause I remember seeing it.
Now I can't find it in my inbox anywhere, and I'm like, I know I saw it in there. So I was like, oh, 'cause they had it in person in Quincy, but they also had it via Zoom, so, and you had to register so they could keep track of how many people were going. But now I can't find it, but when I find it, I will make sure you have it.
Thank you.
It sounds like the committee needs either, A, more time to digest all of this and reflect, and B, perhaps get some more information from the MASC.
I found it.
Did you find it?
September 24th, 6:00 PM, Division III hosting resolutions review. Join the MASC Division III leadership as they host an informal conversation for all of our membership to be in a comprehensive understanding of the resolutions to be considered at the upcoming MASC delegate assembly. So there's a link to register, I'm gonna forward that to-
Is that the back-to-school email?
It's like the fall events.
Okay.
I'm gonna send it to Rob because the group email is not popping up, because I don't think I've ever emailed it, so I'm probably gonna have to forward that out, thank you.
There are also 11 for reconsideration, it is a lot to get through, so, okay?
Thank you.
We'll move it to October. Thank you.
Would you like us to have our grid yes and no's ready, so we can go real quick?
Wouldn't it be a bad idea?
Ready to vote.
How about, Rob and I will work together, we'll create a sheet, and we'll send it.
You could just do, yeah, you could just do a Google form, and we can submit.
Okay, we'll do that.
And then we can announce our-
I don't think we can submit.
To Rob?
Oh, to Rob we can.
To Rob's consent.
Yeah.
He'll know the results before the meeting.
Perfect. Great, okay, next item on the agenda, under business and financial matters is-
Madam Chair, can we just stay on, because I came in late, just for the record, if I could vote yes for both the STA contract and also yes for the CFO contract, if you all voted on it, so just for the record.
We did unanimously, and now it's 7:00.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. And just as a point of information, we received this, a side letter of agreement from the STA just today on an item, so we did not vote on that, because everybody hasn't had a chance to look at it. We'll move that to October, after we share it with everyone.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, next item is a vote on the updated assessment for the towns of Somerset and Berkeley. In your folder, Ms. Pellerin has supplied us with some additional information, I don't know if maybe you wanna sort of-
Sure, Madam. So there are three documents in your packet related to Chapter 70 funding. One is a memo that summarizes the adjustments that'll be credited back to the member towns. The second is the final cherry sheet that was released by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. And the third is a flow of the total cherry sheet estimates from FY24 all the way till FY25 Conference Committee and subsequently the Governor's Budget. There are two numbers involved. Those numbers are, for the FY25 Governor's Local Aid Proposal, that is what's the number that's in the FY25 budget. Based on the Conference Committee and the Governor's Budget, it's a favorable variance, budgetary variance of $70,006.78. That'll be credited back to both member towns on the next payment. So Somerset's credit will be $53,502, and Berkeley's will be $17,168.
Does anyone have any questions? So just point out for folks that the calculation is based strictly on enrollment percentage, and the other thing I would add is that Ms. Pellerin's predecessor, Mr. Tarro, and everyone on the Budget Committee and all members of the administration worked really hard to develop a budget based on our best guess of what those Chapter 70 receipts would be. And the variance, although it's positive for us, is due really because of the delay in passing a final budget, it's not due to anything that wasn't done on time or correctly here. And so we're happy to give the towns the credit, but we just want folks to know that we're doing our due diligence and meeting our deadlines, and unfortunately, sometimes that doesn't always happen with the state on time. If there are any other questions-
May I ask a question regarding that? And Ms. Pellerin and I were discussing this just prior to a meeting. So we know that, as she just indicated, there'll be money going back to the towns, but does the school committee need to approve an updated assessment sheet? Because there's an increase in funding from Chapter 70, which means really it's a decreased assessment to both towns, right? So the total, the operating budget remains the same, but now the revenue sources are a little bit different. So is this fine just with what Raquel just shared? Or do you need to vote on the new operating assessment is this, capital assessment is this, total assessment is this?
Yeah, I have a feeling we have to vote on, because it's an action that we took, and now we're authorizing the credit for both towns, similar to when we had to refund or give credit to Berkeley, we had to take a vote on that, so.
I just pulled up the regional agreement to see if I can just quickly find the language, but I'm not sure I'll find it fast enough. We can certainly just vote it. Can we quickly do the subtraction so that we have the amended assessment numbers for each town? Like, you know what I'm saying? Like, we've got the credit, but I can't math that fast.
I would prefer probably just to redo the assessment sheet, so that way you have it, we're not guessing, and, but there's, it's really, it's not imperative right now, it's not going to really affect anything from Somerset to Berkeley with their monthly payments, but there will be the credit that, the offset to them, right? So future months will be less than what they've been paying from July 1st on.
So it sounds like we can put this on the back to job.
But I just wanted to make sure if that's the right process to revote on the assessment sheet.
That, well, this'll give us some time to kind of-
Okay, so let's hold off.
Yeah, and the only reason why I feel like we may, 'cause we have to vote on which assessment model we're going to use. So I think it's just probably very clear, just a clear thing, let's just make the vote. And now, the towns, do they pay us monthly or quarterly or?
Monthly.
All right, so it's really not like, we're gonna have to write them a check back.
Okay, let's hold it now, let's move it to October, let's redo the assessment sheet, and then we'll vote on the revised assessment and the credit file. Great, thanks everyone. The next item on the agenda under unfinished business is an update on baseball field improvements.
Okay, I believe in your folder you have a document, trying to pull it up here. So last week, Ms. Pellerin, Mr. Tarro, Mr. Carrero, and I met with the landscape architect, and we proposed the schedule that you have to address the drainage in the baseball field. So you can see the timeline where with this kickoff meeting on 9/5, it would go out, if the work was approved, it would go out to bid sometime right after the New Year, bid openings at the end of January, early February, with work eventually starting as soon as school is over in June. The work would take place mostly during the summer, trying to wrap up right around the beginning of the school year, maybe a couple of weeks into the school year, and then it would be ready for play the following spring. So really no loss in access to the fields by our baseball teams. The only, the only loss would be in the summer for outside groups who are coming, like a Legion baseball team or something. But other than that, you can see the schedules, that was just really the initial discussion and really what the timeframe is. Have any questions regarding that? We just thought it would be, it would be good for you to understand the general layout of the expected work.
Thank you.
When I was looking at this schedule the other day, is there any possibl, one, I was very happy that we didn't have to bus any children to any other location to play, but my question, if we start seeding, unless we're using sod, and I can't tell with this, but if they work on the weekend, I mean, in the summer, do they feel like we will have grass?
If I'm not mistaken, I think they were going with the sod option.
They are going with it.
So that-
So it would be, okay.
I thought in the last meeting, Mr. Tarro was saying sod, so we didn't have to worry about not using it.
There's three growth seasons for the summer, so.
Yeah, and the only reason why is 'cause when we start working on the budget next month, I just wanted to make sure if we need any busing for the following year.
No, that way, going with the sod and finishing really by this, pretty much by this date next fall, we still have a pretty strong fall season for the sod to establish itself and be ready for playing in March, yeah.
Okay, any questions? Okay, all right, moving along, the next item on the agenda is the update on the use of the soccer field for ice skating, it was discussed in the last meeting. Can't believe we talked about ice skating when it's 80 degrees out.
So I did have a conversation with our insurance company, and they are going to be providing with us, us with some information about the liability. I also, when we met last Thursday with the baseball field architect, I did ask the question about potential damage to the field. He really didn't think there would be any, but he did say he would do some research for me and get me some information, but his initial reaction was, you'll be fine, and pointed, you know, really asked, was there any damage last year when it happened, and there wasn't any. So he said it's because the grass would be in a dormant state at that time of the year, he really doesn't anticipate there to be any harm done to the, to the grass if we were to do this.
Any more questions? I'm just gonna circle back, I found the language in the regional agreement, and just says, which I'll share with everyone, but it says, "If a proposed amendment to a previously approved budget does not increase the total amount of the budget and reduces the assessment, or if the proposed amendment leaves unchanged the assessment for every member, the amendment shall not require approval by the local appropriating authorities, but shall be effective upon a 2/3 vote of the Regional School Committee." So for October, we'll need to do that with a 2/3 vote. I'll highlight that and just set that around, just. Okay, the next item on the agenda are updates from Berkeley and Somerset. Ms. Solomon, you go first, Berkeley?
We haven't had a meeting yet, our first meeting's next week. We had a great start to this full year, started last week, we have parent nights, one is this week, and the other one, but that commutes was next week. But we haven't had a meeting yet, so I really don't have much, just kicking off.
All right, thank you. Anyone else to give you an update for Somerset?
Well, I can, I can speak to, you know, a few things, certainly. Every month we're discussing our capital improvement planning, because we do have many capital improvement projects on the list in queue for our elementary buildings. So that's something that every meeting, we're focusing on that, and working through a process that will ultimately lead to a 10-year capital improvement plan. At our next meeting, we have invited the Board of Selectmen from Somerset and the town administrator to come and sort of advise us, based on the list of projects that we have in queue that need to be done, what are some recommendations they have in terms of funding sources that the taxpayers of Somerset can afford. So that's something that we're kind of focusing a lot of energy on every month, and is certainly important. We also have a lot of things, you know, going on, certainly with the opening of our new middle school, and so, and we had a nice ribbon cutting ceremony for that, so that was great. I'm sure there are other things, I happen to leave my notebook at home today, so I apologize. Anybody else like to chime in?
I have the agenda, so the other thing, obviously, we welcomed Ms. Pellerin, we talked about additional Chapter 70 increases, we had the elementary handbook that we approved, we talked about our building inspection dates, we had a ton of policies, just as we do here, and I think that's it. Did I miss anything?
If you had any more.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, topics not anticipated by the chair. I don't have any. Next, action items for future meetings.
You have a pretty good list going, right?
So you have a pretty good list going. Is there anything else that's come up? I have just one, and it doesn't necessarily need to be for October, but I think perhaps in the fall. I'm wondering if it would be wise for us to sort of do an annual security update, recognizing that obviously there are a lot of things that we're not gonna discuss openly, but I know that current events, which are sadly not isolated events, weigh heavily in a lot of folks' minds. of folks' minds, and I think we've done a lot of, we are confident in the work we've done in the district to put student safety first and foremost, but we have new parents every year, right, new students every year, and so I think it might be smart for us to revisit that, even though we're aware, just to make sure our families and community members know that that is something that's an ongoing effort and focus for us. I don't know if you have any thoughts on it, Mr. Schumacher, but.
No, I, I think it's, I think it's wise to do that from time to time, too, may, maybe annually, to your point, that every year we have new parents, and it's easy for us, and easy for me to think, we've done this before, but if I did it five years ago, that's five years of parents who haven't received that word. So I think it is, it's, as you said, it's on lots of people's minds, so I welcome that conversation, too, I know Ms. Ashley is wanting to do the same for Somerset.
And on the Somerset agenda, what I had asked was that we had an opportunity to speak about it generally in an open session, but then also put it on the executive agenda so that we could talk details and specifics in a manner that was appropriate to discuss security, so.
Is that on your, will be that on your agenda for October?
It will be on our agenda for next week.
Okay. I don't want to put too much on October, and also I don't want to, I want to give folks adequate time to sort of prepare and think about that, so, I know the wishes are the committee, but I'd love to see some kind of conversation about that either in October or maybe November at the latest, just as folks are settling into the school year.
Yeah, and it might give the district, the administration, and also the opportunity to also execute some drills and have feedback, you know, in advance of that meeting, if you perhaps schedule that in November, so.
All right. Okay, so we'll go for November?
Sure. And I know another fall action item, Ms. Haskell will be certainly giving a couple of updates, one, professional development plans for the year, and two, assessment summaries for the previous year. We haven't, I haven't heard anything from DESI yet about when MCAS results are going to be released. As Dr. Bresler said earlier, we've received preliminary results, but I don't know, usually that happens by now, or at least DESI will have, will communicate to superintendents initially what the plan is, and I, have you received anything?
Nothing.
So that might be October, maybe that'll be November, but that's also a typical fall item. And my only other one I know, it'll be addressed with your MAS resolutions, the first resolution is on the MCAS ballot question. This past weekend, I, attending the MAS executive committee meeting, this was on our agenda, really talking about this ballot question. So I have some resources that I was going to share with both school committees, just for your own reading, that really show pros and cons for both sides. I don't know if that is something that, just, maybe it'll, that'll be part of the MAS discussion with the resolutions, but I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about what that, what the ballot question is. I think a lot of people think it eliminates MCAS, and it does not eliminate MCAS, it would eliminate, MCAS is a graduation requirement, but the test would remain, so I wasn't sure if that is something that you would want as a discussion point, or just embed it within the resolutions, if there are some questions there.
Wishes of the committee?
So, you know, I think what we talked about was to sort of do our research about the resolutions and come to decisions individually, so we can be prepared to vote at the next meeting. However, if this is something that the administration can provide additional information, if we put that as an agenda item in advance of the official vote, it gives, it does give us the opportunity to perhaps change our vote if we're so moved after receiving more information, that's my thought.
I think that's a good suggestion.
You go.
Thank you. Anything else?
Bring your seat cushion.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the minutes of prior meetings. Does anyone need to pull either of those out? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the open and executive session minutes of August 13th, 2024, as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ashley, seconded by Ms. Ferrer, anything on discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Next item on the agenda is public input. Do we have any public input? The next item then is that I would entertain a motion pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter, to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of or any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements to consider the release, redaction, withholding of August 13th, 2024 executive session minutes, and pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Somerset Teachers Association and the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, AFSMI, paraprofessionals, the committee will not return to open session. I have the motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ferrer, and seconded by Ms. Ashley on roll call, right? All those, let's see, vote. Ms. O'Brien?
Aye.
Ms. Ashley?
Aye.
Ms. Ferrer?
Aye.
Mr. Fenstermaker?
Aye.
Ms. Solomon?
Aye.
Mr. Machado?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.